So, glad everybody could make it here tonight. If we could start out with a roll call.
Alderman Ship, absence. Alderman Genin.
Present.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Present.
Alderman Tullanair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll do the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got item number five.
Minutes of the December 17th, 2018 meeting.
Moved to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Moved to second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six.
State of the city address by Mayor Mike Tomes.
So everyone gets to listen to me for a little bit. Try to keep this interesting. It's always interesting the second time around, I guess, see if I can mimic it the best I can the first time. But, so I'd like to give you a little thoughts of 2018 and then a few for 2019. But of course, it's been my honor to deliver this state of the city address for the second year. We have many accomplishments this past year, but also recognize that work continues to be done. I believe citizens in the community can feel in a few different ways about their city where they live. They can feel proud, discouraged, or content or involved, forgotten or excited. I understand that there's a lot more than that, but I want the citizens of Rock Island to feel proud, involved, and excited about our city. Pride in our community, involved in our decisions, and excited about living the future of Rock Island. Excitement is the goal, but we have to have the first two, pride and involved. We will always continue to move forward. Those in charge of moving us forward include hundreds of city employees, directors, the city manager, and your elected officials. I feel extremely confident that we have the right people in place to make necessary changes the citizens of Rock Island deserve. First, I'll go through what has transpired this past year by each department as they've accomplishments they've made throughout 2018, and then conclude with some thoughts of 2019. Our Community Economic Development Department has seen many accomplishments this year. The CED department is responsible for many different aspects: development, inspections, zoning, curl of loans, facade grants, building permits, HUD grants, the community activities, amongst, believe it or not, other things. And I bring this up because sometimes people think of economic development as just that, bringing economic development, but this department does many other activities throughout the city. This past year, they've had developments that have brought in 300 jobs to the community, new investments topping $27 million, handled 3,000 permits, 3,200 building inspections, 1,300 permits, 2,400 nuisance violations, and over 700 health inspections. They've oversaw a redevelopment, a little urban park, pocket park on 30th Street and 14th Avenue. Garden sites, they've increased a good number of garden sites throughout the city and turned what were just either blighted homes torn down or just empty lots, turned them in very productive. And we've calculated that these gardens produced over $65,000 worth of groceries. Eleven facade grants totaling $65,000. Over $1 million in HUD grants, Douglas Park cameras, sidewalks, amongst other things, improving the safe walk to school with the sidewalks, improving the appearance down at Douglas Park and making ADA accessible, put in a mural down there, and a number of other items down there, along with cameras throughout the city in intersections or neighborhoods to help with safety. Demolition of several blighted homes. And then a couple items that they were involved with, but it did not cost the city money, was the demolition of the former case plant and the Norcross boot factory. Thirty-seven housing rehab projects, $187,000, whether it be loans or grants, to help people have livable homes. Conducted a summer archaeological program at MLK and aided in Douglas Park mural, both those two items. I got involved a little bit and went down and saw the kids in the architectural dig and took what was just what you would say is a normal site, and it was amazing to see those kids and the involvement that they had. You know, sometimes they fill a piece of glass and they'd be asking, "What do you think this is?" And then they talked about, next time you talk to them, and they did some research and found out it was depression glass, or in some cases, just regular. But they found pottery, they found all different kinds of things, but the excitement in the kids and involvement of sifting through the dirt was very, very rewarding to see something like that happen. So, once again, helping with the kids get involved and maybe taking up archaeological as a job. Translated home rehab brochures into other languages. A number of immigrants and refugees had a tough time reading what we have to offer. The other city documents also, in four different languages. Partnered with other Illinois cities for lead-based painting. We received a grant of $2.4 million over three years, along with other cities. So once again, collaborating with our fellow Illinois communities. New enterprise zone. We lost this enterprise zone, a very helpful tool for economic development last March, and the city of Rock Island, along with other Illinois cities, applied for a new enterprise zone and was granted that, but they worked very hard at getting that to happen. Two opportunity zones that we were able to accomplish. We're the only ones in the Illinois Quad Cities that were offered these, and so it's another opportunity for economic development. Updated the downtown street plan. Got that more updated and current with what's going on. More involvement in the neighborhoods. I couldn't tell you how many different activities they got involved with, along with other departments, the fire department, the police department, but CCC holding their neighborhood picnics, other neighborhoods holding ribbon cuttings for streets, renovations, blighted houses come down. The CE department was there helping get those orchestrated, along with the refugees, holding an open house with the refugees and immigrants for the first time, and helping them understand what tools are available to them. Bringing to them vendors like the MetroLink Bus, or Blackhawk College, or the school system, local school system. Once again, helping them understand the tools and availability to help them grow and prosper in the United States. Town hall meetings. We had a number of award meetings, but we also had the first larger townhouse, town hall meeting called Unplugged. Great success, good number of people there. We plan on doing that again this year in 2019, but we had a lot of good comments and feedback from people that, once again, showing transparency and openness and availability to the public. These are all very positive for the city of Rock Island, and I commend the work from all the employees to make this happen. Before we move on, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge a man this department and the entire city recently lost. Lieutenant Colonel Retired Thomas Ayers passed away at his home December 25th after a tough battle with cancer. Tom's contributions to Rock Island for the past 18 years as chief building official and his service to our country were extraordinary, along with our, to the community. Our condolences once again go out to Tom's wife, children, father, and family for their loss. The police department, as of November 30th, 2018, a comparison of Part One Uniform Crime Reports offenses, try to get this correct, I'm gonna read this, but murders, criminal sexual assaults, robbery, aggressive assault, burglars, thefts, motor vehicle thefts, arson, are 9% lower than they were in 2017. While Part One crimes designated as violent offenses, murder, criminal sexual assault, and aggravated assault are 35% lower than in 2017. Once again, another nice decrease in crime. And of course, we don't want to pound our chest too hard because it can circle back around, we can have problems again, but we have seen a trend down over the number of years, which is outstanding what the officers are doing out there. Installed additional intersection cameras for four intersections that can be used for traffic and criminal investigations. Revamped their recruitment program, being able to increase the number of new police applicants. For 2018, we had 317 applicants compared to 196 in 2016. So once again, people are looking to work in Rock Island. Was awarded the reaccreditation in 2018, being certified as a Tier Two accredited police agency through the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Rock Island is the only police agency within the Illinois Quad Cities to be accredited and has been since 2013. Once again, a great accomplishment. Reorganized the structure of the department to create the Tactical Operations Division, where its focus on investigation of violent crimes and firearms related to crimes, once again, by helping, redoing this reorganization, continues to help reduce the crime rate. Police Officer Doug Williams was honored as 2018 Police Officer of the Year at the Knights of Columbus Civic Awards Ceremony. Fire Department conducted the Operation Prom program at Rock Island High School, was designated a Five-Star Fire Safe Community by Northern Illinois Fire Sprinkler Advisory. Once again, taken on a controversial issue, stuck to it, city council was willing to stick to this, and we got recognition for it. Partnered with Red Cross Quad Cities for the Sound Alarm Campaign, as well as the Illinois Fire Safety Alliance to install free smoke alarms. Five probationary members successfully recruited, completed Basic Firefighting Academy Training. Firefighter Cody Bauer was honored as 2018 Firefighter of the Year for Knights of Columbus Civic Awards Ceremony. Upgraded the fire reporting software to be more user-friendly and to streamline the submission of reports to FEMA. Continued community outreach to train citizens in CPR, doing continued outreach programs and once again, meeting the citizens, working with the citizens of Rock Island, once again, as the police department has done, CED has done. And I know that it was great to watch, I'll go back to the open house we had for the immigrants and refugees, to watch those kids climb around the equipment and feel safe, that these people are not there to harm them, but to work with them and help them. And so, once again, all those departments continue to encourage that involvement. Received the 2018 EMS Bronze Award from the American Heart Association Mission, Lifelong Program for Outstanding Care of Patients Suffering from Cardiac Arrest, Stroke, or Heart Attacks. All Fire Department paramedics successfully recertified in advanced cardiac life support. So once again, continued education, making sure that we've got the best out there and they're well-trained in current technologies. Public Works. City staff implemented the flood stage strategy plan as the river rose, which included installing pumps and closing gate walls. This year, I don't know if it's a record, but I believe it's three times at least they've had to implement this plan, and so it's, once again, shows great organization skills and consistency in being able to respond at a minute's notice. The Municipal Service Division partnered with the Rock Island Myland School District to replace sidewalks in front of the Math and Science Academy in Franceard Willard. Once again, community involvement, partnering with other agencies and people in the Quad Cities and helping the kids safe walk to school. There was a lot of sidewalks replaced this last year to make sure that they had a safe way. LED light conversion were completed to city-owned lights in the Southwest Industrial Park and several other locations, and we've partnered with Mid-America Energy on their poles and have a contract with them to make sure that those get converted to LED also, and working to make the city efficient and looking forward. Work on long-term control plan continued, was completed in 2018. This was a number of years in working and continuing to make sure that we can treat water, storm and sewer water, and put it back in the Mississippi better than what we found it. And so, kudos to that, long-term commitment from the city over these years. Construction of the new water filtration facility, which is replacing a 109-year-old filtration building, is now over 50% complete. It's about a $20 million project. I hate to say well overdue, we want to make sure we've got our money's worth, but we've had grid water, great quality of water over the years, but it's now time to catch up, be more efficient on how we do that. The Engineering Division is managing two major resurfacing projects on 18th Avenue from 17th Street to the Moline border and 38th Street from 7th Avenue to Blackhawk Road. Two major thoroughfares throughout our city are going to be resurfaced. They started 18th Avenue last year with some of the ADA installations and the subgrade on some patching, and then this year, when the construction season starts, they'll resurface 18th Avenue and then get started with 38th Street. The Engineering Division also assisted and managed several community development block grants, CBDG, CDBG, projects for the Community Economic Development Department, which included fiber optic lines and security cameras, installations, sidewalk repair, as mentioned, by Longfellow School this time. And so continuing to work on that and getting people an opportunity to have fiber optic lines for speed of communication. We've got a new management group running Sunset Marina called F3. They just started this fall, and that should help improve the quality of service that's down there. These people are experts in the Marina industry, and we hope to be able to pick up some new business there. Information Technology Department worked closely with Rock Island Public Library to install new time management system and self-service printing systems for public use, as I think we heard Angela talk about earlier in the work session. Worked with the police department and CED to install 34 new public safety cameras for busy intersections in Rock Island, 11th Street, the Arsenal Bridge entryway, to give a couple Upgraded the Finance Department's utility billing system to meet current security standards. We all hear about hacks these days and everything else, and once again, want to try to stay on top of that and make sure that we prevent any situations. Implemented new communication technology for both wastewater and water filtration systems. IT continues to explore and implement technology solutions that address open data, transparency in local government, smart city initiatives, the Internet of Things, cloud computing, and community engagement. Once again, a theme that we've had, I know for the last several years, of transparency, ease of mobility, and working around, working through the system to understand what the city is doing with their tax dollars. And so they worked very hard at trying to make that as simple as possible. And if it works for me, it'll work for anybody, I tell you that, that's for sure. But, so, IT is a department, sometimes people don't think about in involvement because they're not out in the public, they're not in the face, but they are very key behind the scenes. Finance Department. The city's bond rating was updated in November and the negative outlook was removed. The rating is A2, stable, which is in the middle of the investment grade categories. The city's 2019 budget was approved with a mixture of expenditure reductions, revenue increases, and use of reserves. And that was done just here recently, and I know the painstaking that we've had the conversations among, up here with elected officials, along with staff. Those were not easy decisions to be made on where to make cuts, where to increase revenue, and we want to make sure that we stay as a very solid, financially stable city. The city received a General Finance Officers Association Award for its audit and budget documents. Once again, confirming that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing with the numbers, making sure that everything is, checks and balances are in place, and that we know where we are going in the future. The Finance Department made it easier for businesses to remit its local taxes and report to the city. They can now do so through the website. Once again, making things and items more convenient for the citizens. They don't have to leave their home. If they can't or don't wish to, they can do it electronically. Human Resources. Human Resources held its eighth annual benefit fair in April 2018. This event in partnership with Rock Island County. There were 68 vendors there, 170 city employees, and 173 county employees in attendance. Once again, educating, working with the staff to make sure that they know what's available with their benefits as they follow their career. Maintained a flat renewal for the commercial insurance program, trying to control costs. Key staff hires this past year included development program manager, a fleet manager, utility superintendents, seven police officers, and eight firemen. Introduced the 360-degree review for non-affiliate employees and managers, which was the city council's objective, we talked about in goal setting. Once again, it's trying to make sure that they get all different views of different people, what people, how they're performing. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center received a new $121,000 state grant to serve youth 11 through 17. That's an age group that gets forgotten a lot of times. You see a lot in daycares, you see a lot in activities after school, before and after school with tutoring, Spring Forward, et cetera. This is an age group that gets forgotten sometimes, and they're right at that age of forming their thoughts and opinions in the future. And so, it's a very important grant for them to be able to work with those kids as they're developing who they want to be and what they want to do. And so this is a great program that they're implementing here. Improved youth literacy rates in summer day camp and after-school programs. They partnered, once again, as a common theme, partnering with other people with Spring Forward, working with kids and educating, making sure they try to stay on top of what's going on. Revitalized Family Fun Day and introduced the Drill Team Showdown with the Metro Youth Program. Boy, if you haven't heard them and worked with them, that's inspiring, I tell you, that's a lot of energy there. Served over 2,000 youth in 2018. It's a lot of people. The library. Programs drew a record of nearly 19,000 people in 2018, which is a 10% increase in prior years. You talk about people saying, "Do you need libraries anymore? Are they really reading books?" And this shows that there's a 10% increase in people coming to visit the libraries. So they must be doing something right, or we wouldn't see this. Refreshed furnishings in the children's room at the downtown library, thanks to a grant from the foundation that we heard from earlier. Launched hashtag Rock Town Reads. It's a lot of fun, I remember doing that when we had the school function down at Shreveport Park, by the Initiative for Community Partners, such as the Martin Luther King Center, Spring Forward Learning Center, and the Rock Island Myland Schools. Collaboration, three different units there. Implemented Rocket into Reading, a new literacy program for kids 6 through 10. Very important that they continue to learn to read. Staff attendance. Staff attended nearly 150 outreach programs in 2018, many of which promoted library card registration. Once again, 150 times you're out there someplace. It's schools, it's picnics, whatever it is, that's a lot of times in staff and resources to go out and do, and planning, 150 times. Expanding upon their collection, the library now circulates Wi-Fi hotspots and board games and has also implemented the first seed library in the area to encourage community gardening and sharing of these seeds. Once again, if you remember, I talked about these community gardens. I believe there's 20-some-odd gardens. And to get those seeds and know what type of seeds, and so they're helping facilitate that. Once again, somebody might buy some seeds and have more than they need, and so they go to waste. This way, they're able to make sure that they get the right seeds, share it to be productive. Community-based strategic planning for the library, which was a success. The plan is complete and will implement, be implemented at the beginning of 2019. We happened to just hear that a few, a half hour ago. Park and Rec Department. Phase one of Douglas Park, Big Diamond, parking lot, concession stand, press box, bedding cage, community playground, were all completed. These are completed. There was a huge investment by both the city and private individuals in this case. There was over half a million dollars invested in that park so far, and is doing an outstanding job, but you wouldn't believe in how the public, or the private, has come together for that. In not only their dollars that they pledged, but in the sweat equity that they're putting into it. We've had that success in other areas, whether it be Hallberg Center, as an example, that what happens when you partner together with the private and the public system and what you can accomplish. There really is no end to that. It continues to make improvements. It's an outstanding facility. The First T Learning Center, short course, driving range, projected project completed Highland Springs. Once again, working with the youth. We are now, I believe, there's now four courses, three, four courses, five places in the Quad Cities that have First T, helping the youth learn how to play golf, but in some cases, it's just helping building self-esteem in what they can accomplish by spending a little time, and it's great activity and physically. Thirty-six, over 36,000 visits to Whitewater Junction, over 200,000 visits to RIFAC, over 45,000 visits to Saki and Highland Springs Golf Courses. Over 15,000 people went to Red, White, and Boom. They held the 62nd Annual Starlight Review Concert, and wonderful concert that is, if you go up there in Lincoln Park and listen to that Thursday nights, I believe, Tuesday nights, or Tuesday nights, Thursday nights down at Shreveport. But I want to make and mention here that some people have talked about in budget cuts and everything else, the RIFAC and the golf courses. Those three facilities are self-sustaining and actually bring in the revenue for the park board. The Park and Rec Board finances two-thirds of its budget itself. The city then funds the other third, roughly. So those amenities that the city have are profitable and a great amenity for the city. Over 30,000 was raised through local sponsorships to the park programs. Completed a reorganization of the Park Maintenance Division into Public Works. This resulted in Public Works being able to fill vacant positions at no increased expense to the general fund, or it has given, the park recreation department more maintenance resources. Once again, reviewing and looking at how to save money. They're saying if we combined our staff, it gives more flexibility and could save money, helping with vacations and sick days, and if there's large projects, they could partner together and have increased labor force on a specific project, or decreased if things happen to be going fine. So that was a very good process. Completed the installation of a new ADA shelter and playground at Hodge Park. So people forget about Hodge Park, great little park and buried in the residential area, and it's got a lot of character. Completed phase one of tuck pointing at the Hallberg Civic Center and repaired all the plumbing in the mansion. As I mentioned before, public and private partnership. Several years ago, this was something that was on, I hate to say the wrecking ball, but it was to be sold as excess inventory and was found a way to revitalize the life of that building and turn it into something very positive. And there's a lot of sweat equity going into that. And there's a lot of sweat equity going into that of private industries, private dollars, uh, along with the, the help of the city. It's a great, great hidden jewel. Renovate the bathrooms and concession stand at the Allen Campbell Sports Complex. New ADA bleachers were installed at Ben Williamson Park. Douglas Park and Rock Island, Douglas Park and the Rock Island Independent Football Team were designated into the NFL Hall of Fame Traveling Museum. Now we mentioned NFL, speaking of NFL, if you haven't heard the news, which it had to be under Rock, I think at this point, but Rock Island is going to be part of the NFL Draft this spring. April twenty-seventh, we're going to have live broadcast of the NFL Draft here along with some other events. Great exciting thing to happen. And once again, I guess I'll back that up. Those that don't know, the first or one of the first NFL football games was played right here in Rock Island at Douglas Park. And so their hundredth anniversary, they're, uh, bringing the, the draft pick back to help honor that. As you've just heard, a lot of work has been done this past year. And I'm honored to work next to so many great people, whether it be elected, whether it be city staff and the citizens of the committee, all the different committees and everything else, it's been a, a great honor and pleasure. It's easy to talk about the accomplishments. Now let's look at some of the hard realities, which we need to do once in a while. We need more development. Not easy, we've had some good development in two thousand eighteen, some great projects came forth, we've got some of them done. Some are on the cusp of being done, some should be happening this spring. But we need more and it takes a lot of hard work by everybody. C E Department Chandler's group works very hard at trying to make that happen. Whether it's for the watchtower location downtown or beyond, we need more. There's no doubt about it. We need to find ways to stabilize our budget. As of right now, our financial position is solid. But that, but that will not continue if we don't commit to making difficult decisions. And expenses are rising, as a lot of households have talked about, revenues are flat. Every know, everybody knows that's a recipe for financial failure. We cannot go on without expense cuts that might affect core services. And I say might, saying they will, but they might. We've been asking departments to do more with less. We're going to have to continue to produce a balanced budget each year. Without using reserve funds, should not be using reserve funds. It will not happen if we continue to handle business as normal. This is saying that we do need in two thousand nineteen, really dig deep and take a look at what we're going to see for revenues for two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one and try to project those out along with the revenues, the expenses and revenues. This could mean, as I mentioned before, might, that core services may have to change. Core services being, uh, how many fire stations we have? How many routes do we have to plow, the streets? How many employees do we have? What streets we repair, how many streets, if any? Garbage collection, it could be, there's a lot of different core services that the city offers that we've been able to offer premium quality service to people, to our citizens. Collecting leaves, you can go on. We've got to take a look at those and say, are those things that we can still continue to do? Where should we make the cuts if we need to make those cuts? But that's going to have to happen in two thousand nineteen, start looking at those things. So we don't get caught off guard in the future. Not pleasant things to look at or talk about, but a necessary evil. There are my, many positive things on the horizon. We just need to keep collecting wins. The number of wins will outweigh the one big score. And we are in a great position to do that. There will be more community outreach ideas. We started a new tra- a task force called Technology and Sustainability, positive thing. Taking a look throughout the city. This is happening, going to be happening in two thousand nineteen is one of the things. Taking a look through the city is how can we be more efficient? How can we be more environmentally sound and stable and sustainability? Whether it be, uh, uh, LED lighting, whether it be solar panels, panels, whether it be just new air handling equipment, whatever it may be. But this committee and the staff are taking a look at where those make feasible sense. And hope to be able to save the city some money along with being green. Great new project that's on the horizon here. We will continue to grow and foster partners, partnerships. We'll always look for the new opportunities and the benefits for the city. The resilience of this, of Rock Island's residents is great. Our community pride is strong. So once again, thank you for all your time. I look forward to bringing excitement in Rock Island in two thousand nineteen. And this rock town rocks, that's for sure. All right. Item number seven.
Proclamation declaring January two thousand nineteen is National Mentoring Month.
And I'm going to have Judith read these because you've heard me enough.
Proclamation, whereas everyone remembers someone special, a neighbor, teacher, relative or friend who broadened our horizons and brought purpose to our lives. And whereas these special individuals singled us out and volunteered their time to help us become engaged and stay on the right track to success. And whereas every adult has something to offer a child and every child has something to offer to our community. And whereas, research has shown that children engaged in healthy and safe one-to-one mentoring relationships are more likely to graduate high school, avoid incarceration and avoid delinquent behavior. And whereas, there are a significant number of vulnerable children in our community who need and want a positive role model in their lives. And whereas, our city embraces the concept of engaging volunteers to mentor children of promise in our community.
Therefore, I'm Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, proclaim January two thousand nineteen as National Mentoring Month in the City of Rock Island and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies and religious and edu- educational institutions, institutions to support mentoring and give young people in our community the gift of time and friendship to big brothers, big sisters.
Thank you beyond big brother, big sisters.
Yeah, thank you on behalf of big brothers, big sisters for, uh, giving us this tonight. And we enjoy being in big brothers, big sisters, don't we?
Yeah.
How long we been together?
Three years.
Thank you.
Great, and I think a little plug, I think there's a putt around the thirtieth or twenty-ninth or thirtieth of January?
Yep, there's the big brothers, big sisters putt around, uh, it's a fundraiser and so it's a great time. We enjoy going every year.
And, and if anybody didn't see also a really, a little plug is, uh, this year, I think was the first year, first year they climbed the wall or descend down the wall. Did you descend down the wall? No, you did not. My wife did that, but it was, if anybody saw the Black Hawk Hotel over Davenport, people got to descend, they raised money and got to climb down the wall as a fundraiser over there. And they, uh, record amount, I mean, I can't remember how much, but it was great.
Over a hundred thousand.
Over a hundred thousand dollars they raised, allowing people to, uh, descend down this wall. It was a great, uh, great scene and, and a lot of fun. So a couple of different fundraisers, but thank you for what you guys do.
I had coffee this morning with Jay Justin, uh, the director of big brothers, big sisters and Virgil, you'll be glad to know. Uh, they have two hundred and fifty matches in Rock, in Davenport High School and two hundred and fifty matches in Rock Island High School. Sharon Load.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, item number eight.
Proclamation declaring January twenty-first, two thousand nineteen is Martin Luther King Junior Day. Proclamation, whereas Martin Luther King Junior devoted his life and career to the advancement of civil rights, equal treatment and human decency for all people. And whereas, the efforts of Dr. King and the many others involved in the civil rights movement have helped to break down the walls of injustice and allow African-Americans and other minorities to succeed both as individuals and as members of society. And whereas, the goals and ideals of Dr. King have not yet been fully realized. With that in mind, it is our duty as Americans to continue his struggle and to work toward a more understanding and respectful society. And whereas, Martin Luther King Junior Day serves to bring people together in remembrance of this true American hero and encourages citizens to engage in community service, which in turn serves to honor Dr. King's legacy and advance the cause of justice and equality in America.
Now therefore, I'm Mike Tomes, Mayor of Rock, City of Rock Island, proclaim Monday, January twenty-first, two thousand nineteen as Martin Luther King Junior Day in the City of Rock Island, Illinois, and encourage all citizens to serve their fellow Americans and help to make this a better community, thereby providing a fitting memorial to the life of Martin Luther King Junior.
It's my honor to invite all of you and the entire community to the Martin Luther King Center this coming Monday, the twenty-first. Starting at ten-thirty, we'll have our annual service remembering Dr. King by celebrating, uh, some of the great examples in our community of his legacy. We're at the honor of rewarding one of our Rock Island citizens the Eye of a Dream Award. We'll be giving out a scholarship to a young individual and we will be able to lift our voices in song and to hear wonderful speeches as well. It's a wonderful tribute, I really encourage each and every one of you to attend and everyone in the community to attend, it's well worth your time. And you should walk away feeling uplifted and galvanized to be a part of this community. Thanks.
Item number nine.
Proclamation declaring January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen is National Day of Racial Healing. Proclamation, whereas we have witnessed racism rising in America's urban, rural, suburban and tribal communities today that threatens the very core of this great country's unified front. And whereas, just like those who came before us, it is our duty to protect the children of this country and maintain communities in which they may all be given the opportunity to succeed. And whereas, we recognize that there is a racial divide in our country and we must all work earnestly to heal the wounds created by racial, ethnic and religious bias and build an equitable and just society so that all children can thrive. And whereas, all children have the right to be provided every opportunity to learn, grow and thrive in nurturing environments that don't violate their safety, dignity and humanity. And whereas, the economies of communities across this country are depressed by racial inequities that exist across our systems. And whereas, every single person has the capability to make a simple change within him or herself that it can have a profound effect on an entire society. And whereas, if we all dedicate ourselves to the principles of truth, racial healing and transformation, we can all bring about the necessary changes in thinking and behavior that will propel this great country forward as a unified force and racial biases will become a thing of the past. And whereas, racial healing is a vital and crucial commitment to the education, social, mental and overall well-being of all of our children. And whereas, local government has a unique responsibility and opportunity to transform institutions and systems by using a specific lens to change policies, practices and procedures that promote racial inequities while simultaneously ensuring everyone is better off. And whereas, the City of Rock Island has committed to taking action as a municipality to make systemic changes in policies and practices that foster racial healing and advance racial equity.
Now therefore, I'm Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim that this city, along with other net, others throughout the United States, honors and recognizes January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen as National Day of Racial Healing. And urge all citizens to promote racial healing and transformation into ways that are best suited for them individually and as means to work together to ensure the best quality of life for every child.
On behalf of the Rock Island County NAACP, I am proud to accept this award today. Uh, and, uh, I, um, look forward to the city council of Rock Island, uh, implementing the goals that are stated here. Not just on this one day, but throughout the year and in various ways where the city can take action to improve, uh, the race relations and, uh, justice and equality for all people. Thank you.
Item number ten.
Proclamation recognizing the years of service Doug Vroman gave to the Rock Island Fire Department and the Firefighters Pension Board. Proclamation, whereas in December two thousand eighteen, Doug Vroman announced his retirement from the City of Rock Island's Firefighters Pension Board after nearly thirty years of service on the board. And whereas, serving on a pension board requires many hours of preparation for meetings, volumes of administrative work and a required minimum of sixteen hours annually of continuing education. And whereas, Doug has been a selfless leader in the community as a pension board member and in his professional associations. And whereas, Doug was hired by the City of Rock Island Fire Department on September fourteenth, nineteen eighty-one and not long thereafter began his service to the pension board as an active employee, having been elected by the active participants. And whereas, he rose up through the ranks and became fire chief in June two thousand six and retired from active duty on October fifth, two thousand ten. And whereas, he continued his service on the pension board, having been elected by the retiree members and thereby devoted nearly thirty years serving the members of the City of Rock Island Firefighters Pension Board. And whereas, Doug loves to hike and has completed the Appalachian Trail as well as various other trails throughout North America. And whereas, Doug Vroman will now officially retire from his service to the City of Rock Island and pursue his passions of enjoying the outdoors, traveling and improving the world around him.
Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby encourage the citizens of Rock Island, Illinois, to recognize and serve the service of Doug. the service of Doug Vroman to the city and especially the Fire Department and Firefighters Pension Board, and appreciate his dedication to the furtherance of his profession in sound financial management of the Pension Board.
Although, you who know me, I have a hard time being real quick, but I will, just, I want to thank a couple of groups. One, the Pension Board that I serve on, these folks are dedicated and committed and well-trained, and I just want to thank them for their support and dedication. Stephanie, Linda Barnes, City staff, have done an outstanding job helping us through a lot of the challenges that we've faced. Chad Jacobs, Paul Hoffititz, have, have committed several years on this board, which allows me to kind of walk away with the feeling that we're in good hands, so, thank you. The second group I would like to thank is the City Council, both past and present. I've been involved in this, as you've noted, for over 30 years, and I will tell you that we associate with a lot of police and fire funds throughout the state, and there's a lot of stories, a lot of them bad stories, about the relationship between the city administration and the Pension Boards, and there's been a lot of issues. Many of you are well aware of funding issues. In my 30 years on this job, this City Council has worked hand in hand with us to meet the challenges and always with the intent of doing the right thing and funding these, these pensions. And it's not an easy story, you all know it, you have challenges ahead of you, but I would like to thank you for your support through the past 30 years. You folks have done the right thing, so, thank you very much.
Okay, item number 11.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing regarding the HUD CDBG Program Year 2017 Consolidated Annual Performance Report.
All right. Going to close the regular meeting, open the public meeting? I don't know if Colleen or somebody wants to make a statement or not, or...
No?
No? Okay. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this issue? Lowell?
I've signed a favor.
To talk about this specific issue?
Which one?
About the, the CDBG money, HUD money?
Wait.
Okay, you bet. That's fine. Does anybody else want to speak in favor, against, just comments about the HUD CDBG money, the program, 2017? There's nobody there. We will...
Motion to close the hearing?
Motion, move, we'll close the hearing, public hearing, and reconvene the regular meeting. Now we need a motion to...
A second.
Or a second?
Second.
Second, Avery?
Dave?
Second.
Thanks.
All right, so there's, we have a motion, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Was that a motion, Alderman Tolaner, to close the meeting or a motion to accept and approve? The motion that's written in there?
This was a motion to close the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
We got to close it before you can vote on the other.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Now we need a motion.
Move to accept and approve Program Year 2017 Consolidated Annual Performance Report as submitted and recommended.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion on that?
Thank you very much for your hard work.
Yes.
Your B staff.
Absolutely.
There's wonderful stuff you're doing in this, in these plans, so, I appreciate it.
Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number 12.
A special ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 3, Section 16-85 of the Code of Ordinances, establishing a wastewater rate increase of 3% effective February 1st, 2019.
Motion to consider suspend rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 13.
A special ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 5, Section 16-905 of the Code of Ordinances, establishing a stormwater rate increase of 2% effective February 1st, 2019.
Motion to consider suspend rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
I, you know, it's hard not to speak about clean water, and, and I know 2% and then 3% up above, and, you know, but everybody lives downstream, and we're doing the right thing. It's expensive, but you watch the Eagles at Sunset Park, you, you see the, the rookery right by Sunset Park of the Great Blue Heron all winter. When I was a kid, there weren't Great Blue Herons around, so, it's, it's very expensive, but it's the right thing to do.
And the EPA's making us.
Oh, that too. Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 14.
Claims, I'll read A through C first. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $13,106.91 to David Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois, for legal services rendered from November 29, 2018 through December 28, 2018. B, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $15,000 to the Law Offices of Michael P. Schmeggi, PC of Chicago, Illinois, for general liability claim. And C, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number three in the amount of $73,970.49 to Crafton Railroad Company of Andalusia, Illinois, for the Southwest Railroad Spur Repairs Project for services provided from September 22, 2018 through November 28, 2018.
Motion to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for the claims items A through C.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried. Now I'll read D through H. D, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number 15 in the amount of $341,068.95 to Civil Constructors Incorporated of East Moline, Illinois, for the Water Filtration Facility Project for services provided from November 22, 2018 through December 20, 2018. E, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number 12 in the amount of $69,156.60 to General Constructors Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa, for the Outfall 7 Relocation Project for services provided from September 1, 2018 through September 30, 2018. F, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one and final in the amount of $36,141.50 to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities of Moline, Illinois, for the 2018 Brick Street Repair Program for services provided from November 12, 2018 through December 7, 2018. G, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number two and final in the amount of $241,781.35 to Michael's Pipe Service of Brownsville, Wisconsin, for the 2017-2018 Joint Sewer Lining Program for services provided from March 3, 2018 through December 7, 2018. And H, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number three and final in the amount of $58,677.19 to Tri-City Blacktop Company Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa, for the 2017-2018 Asphalt Street Milling and Patching Program for services provided from October 4, 2018 through December 11, 2018.
Motion to accept the reports and authorize a payment as recommended for the claims items D through H.
Second.
Move to second. Is there any discussion?
Due to the nature of my employment, I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 15.
Claims for the weeks of December 14 through December 20 in the amount of $1,242,710.56, December 21 through December, through January 3 in the amount of $343,434.85, January 4 through January 10 in the amount of $327,426.23, and manual checks in the amount of $405.09, and payroll for the weeks of December 3 through December 16 in the amount of $1,486,321.77, and December 17 through December 30 in the amount of $1,458,285.13.
Motion to allow claims and payroll?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, maybe the rest of them understand it, I don't, Stephanie, what's the deal with the manual checks and the amount of $405,009? Why are those manual checks?
Manual checks don't happen very often, especially since we do have weekly AP runs, but near the end of the month with the holidays, we announced that we would not have AP runs in finance, but there were checks that needed to be cut to the sheriff's office related to serving papers for the electoral board, and they had to be done, and the only payment method was check or cash, and check is a better form, so, we do have the ability to write manual checks and then process them through accounts payable separately.
Because normally, we don't do manual checks, correct?
No, just with the timing of the holidays, that we couldn't put them in a regular check run, and the checks, the money was needed right away.
Yeah.
Actually, possibly, we might have still had to do manual checks, given the timing of the need of the expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 16.
ACH payments for the month of November 2018 in the amount of $7,805,88.21, and for the month of December 2018 in the amount of $3,414,685.38.
Motion to approve the ACH payments?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Thanks.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 17.
Purchase card claims for the period of October 27, 2018 through November 26, 2018 in the amount of $70,512.40, and for the period of November 27, 2018 through December 26, 2018 in the amount of $55,558.56.
Motion to approve the purchase card claims?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
I would just like to encourage staff, when you're thinking of an Amazon order, to find a way, perhaps maybe to find that locally. If you purchase it in Moline, it still comes back to Rock Island through that 1% sales tax for our schools. Let's be mindful of where we're investing and purchasing things, please.
Great point.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 18.
Report from the Parks and Recreation Department regarding bids for the purchase and financing of maintenance equipment, recommending approval of the purchase of equipment in package number one by Toro, MTI, and financing the purchase with BMO at an annual cost of $52,525.59 for five years.
Motion to award the bid and approve the financing of the maintenance equipment as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 19.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the Bay State Regional Commission Joint Purchasing Council bids for water wastewater treatment chemicals, recommending the bids be awarded as noted in the report in the amounts of $456,669 for water and $73,632 for sewer.
Move to accept the bids for the items as recommended and authorize the purchases.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 20.
Report from the Martin Luther King Center regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 1, Section 2-15, approving membership changes to the Martin Luther King Center Board.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yeah, yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 21.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Kate Price for the removal of the handicap parking space at 71630th Street.
Motion to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolaner.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
All right, item number 22. The other business.
Uh, Mr. Geenan, Alderman Geenan.
Alderman Geenan, I think we should look at a policy of purchasing here locally in Rock Island with...
Well, we ask our residents to shop local, I think we could do it too.
But I think it needs to be a defined policy, and we should probably work on that before, you know, and just, just so they have, I mean, it should.
I know we talked about that at one time, but Dave was saying things like that get a little touchy when you say...
Well...
I mean, you might be right. I like it, I like it, but I'm just saying, I want to be making sure we're following the law if we're going to come up with something.
Sure, I'd be happy to give you the research we've done on that, and I, normally, I think that what I had come up with was regard to, um, open, you know, bidding, but I'd be happy to, to get your report.
Well, I, I understand that, but I mean, you can go to Handy and buy a dollar or Boulder, you can go to Menards and buy it for 29 cents, but it takes a man two hours to get the Menards and back, so, I mean, you might think about...
And those are certainly factors that are relevant, fact, those would certainly, what you just said...
I'm not saying that has happened, but that certainly can, may be the case.
Yeah, and that would certainly be a relevant factor, because that is a cost factor, the travel time and, and other things, but I will have to look into it with regard to purchases and see what I can find out. I know we've looked at it with regard to bidding situations, I'll be happy to get your report on that. I mean, well, I just, should just take a few minutes.
Thanks.
Okay, the other comments?
I just wanted to quickly say something about the racial healing in our country. We have, we've seen things happen that we're not happy with, where more people are being discriminated against, we see that starting to rise again, but I wanted people to take a little time and watch our youth. If you had to... to take a little time and watch our youth. If you had the opportunity to come up to Rock Island High School, you will be able to see that our future is bright, that these things are being eliminated. The students do not see, see it like we seen it. They see it better. And serving with the young people on the council, you really see that things are changing. So the young people, I think, are gonna make, gonna take us to a new place, and I'm, I'm happy with, with what I see. I get discouraged at times, but serving with Alderman, Ship, Geenan, and Parker, the younger generations, everyone on the council is wonderful. But they are gonna take us to a new level, and I'm happy to serve with you guys, and I'm happy what I see at Rock Island High School.
Good. Alderman Clark, thank you for that. Uh, kind of interesting. I got a call this week from the Dankman PTA asking if I knew a Mr. Caddish. I asked why. Well, we got a check and a note saying, "All of the best with you and your continued good work with educating America's young people." And it was a check for five thousand dollars. And, uh, Mr. Caddish was the former owner of the Carey Mart Building in Rock Island. And, um, after the sale, he felt that, uh, he, uh, contacted with his, uh, realtor, David Levin, where's the need in the community? And Dankman's been trying to raise money for a playground. Uh, so I think there'll be four hundred cards being sent, uh, to Mr. Caddish this week, uh, from kids who've been hustling chocolate bars for the past ten years. Uh, they finished their fundraising efforts for a new playground.
That's awesome.
So, you know, it's not us. It's these young kids that will be leading us eventually.
Hundred percent of the future. Real quick, I just mentioned, uh, Mr. Jones had made a comment, but, uh, reminder that Monday, January twenty-first, ten-thirty to noon is the, uh, memorial service and a, and a celebration at the Martin Luther King Center, so we can't forget that. Also, there's a, uh, hot rod and custom car show going on at the QCCA Expo, January twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. Uh, so check into that. And then just as important, just a, a good friendly reminder and encouraging the citizens out there to, to use our citizen survey, Polco. Please continue to use that, or if you talk to your friends or neighbors, encourage them to, uh, get involved in answering the questions, and so we can continue to understand, uh, the thoughts and needs of, of the citizens out there. So, so there's that. Anything else here? If not, we have a few people... No, go ahead. Just gonna very briefly mention, uh, Saturday, January twelfth, uh, Argus Dispatch Newspaper on the, uh, viewpoints page, page C three, has some very complimentary things to say about the mayor's state of the city address when it was given at, to the Rotary and Kiwanis Clubs, same address that you heard here tonight. And, uh, I thought it was good that we got some recognition about, uh, that speech and, and about our position and moving forward. Not everybody gets the paper or reads everything in the paper, so I'm just raising that up for people who didn't see it already.
Thank you.
All right. We have a few people in the audience that'd like to speak. Uh, Michael Williams?
Yes, I'm Mike Williams. I've spoken to y'all before about the Eleventh Street Project down here, where y'all been trying to get some business in there. And I had spoken before about maybe bringing in a, an open air market or a flea market down there. Um, I've had a couple of people throw an idea at me that I should throw to you. Uh, I would like a temporary permit down there if possible, say sometime around April, to give it a three month trial down there. And during that three month trial, I would provide five million dollars with the liability insurance. And whatever the cost would be for the permit down there, I would take care of that as well. I'd like to get that on the agenda to see if maybe you could cast a vote on that. And I have people with money to back me up and to support me on this project.
We can't respond. You can head talk to, if you want to talk to Mr. Chandler over here, and he'll, uh...
I've been, I, I, I've talked to people in the development stage of the, of stuff like this before. Uh, flea markets are not big things where you have big gigantic buildings, and there's not a huge investment in, in this, that, and the other. Uh, mostly, all it is wooden tables and an office and wide open spaces. That's pretty much about it, you know? And down there, you got wide open spaces. Nothing's going on down there. And my personal opinion is trying to bring in any kind of thing like an industrial plant down there, something like that's not gonna happen, number one. Number two, you're not gonna get a store to come in there because of the location, number three. Walmart's either the question anyway. So, it's sitting down there, and all the city's doing is just sitting on a piece of property that, that's doing nothing. And I'm trying to get it through to somebody. Give me a chance. Just give me a chance. And let me show the citizens of this community what I'm made of and what I can do down there.
Yeah. So, with Mr. Chandler, and you can work on the devil of detail and plans and what permits it takes, et cetera. And, uh, and then if he feels it's, uh, feasible to bring forward, uh, then we'll, we'll do that.
All right. I appreciate that.
Okay. No, I just wanted to be sure he understood that in order for us to consider something, he has to come forward with a proposal and going through Community and Economic Development Department is the best way to get that put together, I think. Yes.
Well, I think part of my problem is, you know, uh, I'm not a big guy. I don't have all this big money and this, that, and the other. But that's starting to change. I'm starting to get people behind me that got big money. They can make something happen.
I su- I support your idea, and I spoke that way when you came in, uh, a previous meeting.
Right.
But you need to start with the department that handles that sort of thing and put together a proposal.
Me trying to get to even talk with somebody sometimes is almost an impossibility because I'm so busy and this, that, and the other, you know? It's like, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda like, feeling like I'm a waste of time with this. But I'm not. Plain and simple. These flea markets and stuff make tens of millions of dollars, and they bring in revenue, and it brings in money around. Any, any place that you've got flea markets, like down south, everything around it gets built up.
I've been to a lot of them. Can you, can you make an appointment with Mr. Poole? Okay.
You've heard from the mayor and Alderman to, that's who you should connect with. So if you're having an issue with that, let us know.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Robert, I, I can't read, uh, the last name, so I apologize. Pardon?
Menard.
Menard?
Can you spell that, please?
M-I-N-A-R-D.
M-I-N, okay.
Yeah, I'm, uh, Robert, uh, Menard. I reside at, uh, thirty-three oh five twenty-eighth Street Court here in, uh, Rock Island. A fifty-one year resident at that location. However, I was seven years old when my family moved to that location. So, what I like to, uh, talk about is the snow removal. In the years past, it's been done in a timely manner. Let's say we had, uh, snow in the morning. By mid to, uh, late afternoon, a truck would be down, clear it. And, uh, for good measure, they'd come down again at night and even later and, uh, clear it. However, this Saturday was just, uh, terrible. No plows all during the day. Residents were struggling to get up that hill. One resident even resorted to, uh, having a pickup truck push the vehicle up the top of the hill. Then around five o'clock, I had to leave for work, uh, still no plows, so I backed my vehicle down to the bottom of the hill, hoping to get a running start to get up there. It just worked and other times passed. Just stuck. I wasn't going anywhere. So I called the non-emergency number of the police department. They said to, uh, contact Public Works. I called Public Works, got the voicemail. So I was stranded. I need to get to work. Like, I was able to, uh, walk up the hill, walk two blocks to my church, meet my pastor, and she took me to work. And then, uh, I found way home from work for a buddy of mine. I told him, "Don't go down that hill. Drop me off at the top of Thirty-first. You're gonna get stuck." So he dropped me off. And even that evening, there's still been vehicles trying to get up that hill. One was an SUV, and he even, uh, gave up and resorted to having his own vehicle towed. And other vehicles just, uh, stopped and gave up. And then between eight-thirty and nine AM on Sunday morning, I received a call from the Rock Island Police Department about my vehicle stuck down the bottom of the hill. I said, "Well, let me get down there and attend to it." It was too late. There was an officer there. There was the, there was hooked up to the tow. And because of, you know, their, the city's untimely manner, I'm, I was out seventy-five dollars, but the towing fee. But that, but, uh, it is what it is. So then I asked the, uh, tow truck driver, "So, well, can you at least tow it all to the top of the hill? Let's do the smart thing. Don't drop it in my driveway." I tow it to the top of the hill. That way, I'm good. And I said, "Let me check with the police officer." He said, "Yeah, it's fine, as long as it's, you know, off to the side." And so then, he attempted to do that, and the tow truck driver got stuck. And so he ended up dropping the car in my driveway. Then the police officer radio Public Works, within twenty minutes, a, uh, plow did come down. But I'm just, uh, asking if you have more, there's snow removal in a more timely manner. I realize it's not a main street, but however, it is a hill. Residents need to get to work. Residents have doctors, dentist appointments to keep. Uh, kids need to get picked up, dropped off at daycare. Students need to get to school. It's, in the years past, it's been in a timely manner. However, that's the blizzard in November, then this last Saturday was just very untimely. And, uh, for that, residents, we need to have, uh, timely snow removal on, on that hill. And that's, uh, all I'm asking, and I, uh, appreciate your time.
So I would encourage you to reach out to your Alderman. One of the things that we, I've learned is that, um, the plows are working hard, but if they know there's an area of need, they'll direct it there. I had a same message from a p- uh, family that doesn't live in Rock Island concerning their parents, and their parents' street weren't plowed. Uh, she texted me back an hour later, "Thank you so much. The plows came through."
Right.
"We, we need you to let us know where those areas are."
Absolutely.
So I apologize. It didn't happen.
Absolutely.
Did not, once again, continue to, Jeff, Mr. Bartel's there, can answer your questions. Uh, he's in charge of Public Works at this point in snow removal.
Mm-hmm.
So you can give him the address and everything else, but he can, uh, make sure that, you know, at least it's noted for the future, and he can follow through with it.
Great. And thank, thank you very much for your time.
No problem. Thank you. I'd like to make a quick comment. Yeah. I don't know if Mike would want to address this or not for the public. There is a strategy and a priority for what streets get plowed first, which ones get done second, and, and on and on. Do you want to explain that, uh, a little bit to the public, Mike? And it, I'm sure it's also affected, uh, with how much snow is falling how fast and what time of the day or the night it is. But, go ahead.
Yeah. So we start out on the primary routes as soon as the s- snow hits. Um, and then we have secondary routes as well. And I think he's, this gentleman is referring to a secondary route. Um, I think it was Twentieth Street Court. Um, but again, we, we focus on the main routes. We have nine routes. We put drivers in all the routes. Um, as soon as they are, have, have hit all the main routes, or main areas on their route, they're supposed to go into their secondary routes, which are generally hill areas, and, uh, clean up those periodically. Um, it's kind of a get in, get out, make sure residents can, can get into those hilly areas and then back onto their main routes. And then as soon as the snow stops, they finish up cleaning the main routes, go into their secondaries again. And as, as soon as the secondary routes have been completed, then they'll go into the residential streets.
So that first, that first round of second routes is kind of like troubleshooting?
The, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
When you said they kind of drop off secondary routes and then get back to the main routes?
Yeah.
Is there, is there a plan for that second route, or is it just kind of where they think the most need is?
They, they generally go to the steepest hill locations. There's not a specific order, but, uh, depending on where they are on their route, they'll go to that area, uh, that's closest to them and then work one way or the other.
Yeah. Let me ask this question, because I, I was out driving around, uh, the third ward after the streets were plowed, just to check on things. It seems like, um, there are certain, uh, facilities, like schools, um, maybe fire stations, uh, maybe downtown businesses that have, uh, where are they falling in the strategy?
So, on the school routes, um, those are our first priority, along with our primary streets, when school's in session. So this weekend, um, you know, we didn't focus on those because school wasn't in until Sunday afternoon. Um, but again, if, if there was school in section, in session the next day, those would be the first areas we go to. Um, city facilities, we have a dedicated crew to that as well. So we have nine routes, and then we also have a city facility route, which includes all the new parks, maintenance facilities, along with city hall, police stations, um, the downtown parking lots, um, any city facility that we own, besides the libraries, they do their own. But, um, th- those fall in, depending on where the snow and what time it stops and what time those businesses are gonna be open the next day, uh, we'll, we'll assign staff to get those cleaned up for the next day of business. Um, but again, uh, and the, the fire stations, they borrow one of our trucks and have their own personnel do, do their facilities.
Thanks for explaining that.
Mm-hmm. Thanks, Mike.
Two, two questions or comments. Um, one thing that the gentleman said was that he tried calling the non-emergency number, and the non-emergency number told him to call Public Works, and nobody answered at Public Works. Do we have a, and this might not necessarily be a question for, for Public Works specifically, but, uh, what is our communication plan for residents if they need the street plowed? I mean, obviously, it did not work in this instance.
Yeah. We heard that there's no set order. They'll troubleshoot.
So, just, um, to answer your question, we used to have a dedicated snow desk, um, years ago, and we would bring in an office administrative person, and they would sit there the whole entire time for the snow event. And so that could be, you know, as long as that takes, thirty-six hours or so. And they would, they would take calls that come in and then dispatch those calls to the, uh, appropriate snow route. Um, we decided to do away with that, again, just years ago.
Sure.
Because of the cost to, uh, pay that administrative person to be then, and it, a lot of times, those are on overtime, uh, weekends, and the costs were, uh, prohibitive.
Yeah. I imagine there's some supervisor orchestrating where the snow plows are going and whatnot, correct?
We do. We have a, a, a crew leader that's in charge of, uh, the, the snow route or the, the snow personnel, and then a supervisor available at all times, um, during the event. So when Alderman, um, and we get, we get several, uh, you know, requests to, to go to a certain area, um, when I, when I receive that by email or text or phone call, I'll dispatch that straight to the immediate supervisor and himself, or he'll give, give that to the crew leader if he's in, or if he's not, he'll, um, call up the person, uh, momentarily and get it completed.
Uh, the residents of the fourth ward are usually quite vocal. They'll let me know, and then I'd, and it works really well. It, it has for every time. I mean, it doesn't happen to every snowfall, but when it does, and you, you make the call, and it, it's miraculously taken care of, just like that. But those drivers, they, and they mi- I mean, they're human. They miss spots. They go by and something happens over there, and they gotta go around the block, and then they, you know, but, so they need to know when there's an issue. So, and no one takes offense by being reminded that there's a spot that needs to be taken care of, because it's just a job that they do, and they, those guys take great pride in doing their work, too, and, uh...
Some cities have created apps for, for example, for residents to help identify where potholes are. I'm surely, there's, it has to be some type of app for this, too, that we can use and deploy to residents to make it efficient and, uh, less strain on staff.
There is lots of different ways to, to go about that. Each driver does have a, a route map in their truck that is highlighted, that shows the exact areas that need to be plowed and when. And, uh, they, they, um, always stick to that, that route list. So...
Could we, could...
We, we did receive lots of compliments as well for this past snow. Um, again, there's always going to be, uh, complaints when, in everything that we do. Um, but I think we did do a good job this, this past snow event.
Do you think the pretreatment really helps?
Absolutely.
It, it looked to me like it, you know, and it's hard if you, it's hard to compare, but it just, or it was just so much snow over such a long period of time, this last one. Now, in the fourteen incher we had in November, it seemed like it, it did help on the, on the big streets, but, the big hills, Thirty-first Avenue Hills. But this, this was kind of, it didn't look like it helped.
Um, I, I, I really think it helps with the bond to the pavement. Um, it gives us more time for when that first initial snow happens. Um, it gives us the time for our guys to get in and prevent that, the car chaff from packing it down. It gives us that initial melt. Um, two or three hours is, is a, is a good window for us, um, to get, get, get guys in and get it taken care of, and that gives us that lead time.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any way we could provide the non-emergency police number with the correct contact number or email address that they should, that citizens should be addressing their concerns to?
Yeah, absolutely. We could, we could give that to, uh, RICOM and, uh, Police Department as well.
I think that, I mean, it's, it's just seeing the system, you know? I imagine a resident who's not familiar with who to call, if they don't know who their Alderman is or how the city government works, it's natural that the first thing they would think of is call, call the police or the non-emergency number. And so, if we can provide them with the correct number with Public Works to get them to somebody that can address it on Public Works, instead of just the Public Works phone that's not being manned, that makes sense.
And I should add this, too, that the Police Department, RICOM, so they get a call to a non-emergency number or the Police Department, that, that department does have the supervisor's number on hand. And so, if we do receive a call from them, we report, that gets taken care of and gets completed.
Well, like I said, maybe not necessarily for Public Works, but for police, I guess. Make sure that the person, you know, getting the non-emergency number is giving residents the correct phone number to get their issue resolved.
Because I'm assuming you want to hear from residents out of there's concerns about some plowing.
Oh, absolutely.
So, let's make it so we can do it easy.
Yeah, and so, after the fact, I discovered that there was a conversation about this thing on Nextdoor.com. So, I mean, any proactive way, I know staff is very busy doing things, but now people are getting on Facebook and Nextdoor and talking about, "I have this issue." And if, I know that the city has a Nextdoor account, and so, if there's a way that we can be popping in there, making sure nobody's complaining about something, you know, we can be more forward-acting.
It has to be sent to the city, though.
You can't just get on the homepage?
Don't see any of those conversations, no. Has to come to the city, because it's a government account. So, we can't see anything other specifically addressed to us, right?
Well, I look forward to seeing the solution of what we're gonna do so we can make sure residents know that we hear them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have another gentleman, Lowell Lani.
He's 28, 21, 12, Rock Island, Illinois. I think I'm a citizen of this county.
County or city, and city.
Not according to a judge, I guess, right?
The craziest situation you have ever seen in your life. And it's a pleasure to be here and have you listen to the people and discuss it. In the county board meetings, you have only three minutes at the beginning of the meeting, and then they go on with the regular business, and you're not gonna wait an hour and a half or two hours until they get around to it. Crazy. But some people who have been on the board know what I'm doing. We had a referendum here some years ago where they voted to reduce the number of county board members from 25, I think, to 15. And they said, "Oh, we have to wait till 2020 for the census." Well, too bad, because that, there's a little more than half, I think there are people on that board that don't do anything. And the other half have got the brains to put things together, at least they're still alive. But why I'm here today is that I want you to know that we have a, I think, a corrupt judicial system in the county, and to report. I could not get an attorney to represent me in my filing in any one of three counties that make up the judicial system, the 14th Judicial District. We had to go to Peoria, we had to go to Pecan, we're now talking to some people in Chicago. Everybody's afraid of their livelihood. Why? Because of the chief judge. And he's, you know, he has threatened the board. "You either do this, or I'm gonna sue you." And now, he's telling them, "You're either gonna tear down this building, or I'm gonna sue you." And it's not his duty, he's not on the Public Building Commission, and that building has value. And they don't want to talk about it, they won't. Between the chief judge and the sheriff, they've stated, "Can't be privately owned, gotta come down, we need that open space for security." All lies. Let me, real quick. They had a $28 million budget to work with. By the time all the fees were paid, they had left over maybe about $26 million. When they started construction, they took 25% of the construction budget and bought land and built parking lots, between $6 and $7 million. And then, they come to find out they didn't have enough money to build a building that they had planned, which was four stories. So, they wound up with three, and they're short two courtrooms. Now, that's gonna come back to haunt them, because here another year or two, they're gonna need those two courtrooms. And they never even considered utilizing the new annex, which they just completed, and the old building, and working together just, because you've got, standing over there, a building that is worth $10 million on its own. And they're gonna spend a million and a half to tear it down. They just finished with the asbestos removal. They were working night and day to get it done as quickly as possible, because they wanted to start destruction possibly at the end of this week. The state of Illinois finally stepped in. They have a couple of papers that are saying that the city of Rock Island has to clear. And they would have ignored it if someone hadn't pushed them into it. What I'm asking is that you all, I don't care whether you want the building down or not, but if you would, together, tell this group that they have to obey the law, just like everybody else, and not ignore it. They've got the Department of Natural Resources after them. They've got the SHIPA, which is the State Historical Projects Administration. And they won't do anything about it unless you force them to. And you can force them by one, now that they finished the asbestos removal, the building has to be inspected and cleared in order for them to get a permit to demolish. And that permit comes from the city. Please do not issue any permits to this. I swear at them. This insane group. And let them do things according to law. The money that they are using was spelled out in the agreement with the bondholders that they signed before they wanted to tear the building, the old courthouse down. And it says explicitly, "If there's any surplus funds, that money will be returned to the bondholders." And the key word is "will." And that's what I wanted to discuss with Judge Conway and make him a decision. But no, I have no standing. I had suggested to me I should buy a bond, and I would have standing. But I thought that was a little, you know, that's playing their game. But we're getting down to the nitty-gritty, and I hope Rock Island appreciates what we have here and do something to try to keep it. We have five potential investors who want to do something with the building. They won't even discuss it, and they should be forced to do that. Does Rock Island have a say in what's going on in the county? The county raises the funds, Rock Island gets those funds. The county raised taxes, were you asked anything at all about whether this is gonna work with plans you have? 11%, I think it was, this last go-around. And it goes on. There's gotta be more responsibility among the general public to tell this GD County Board to shape up and not wait till 2020 to get them out of there. It's impossible. They have a new administrator, and maybe he'll do some good, but...
So, Lowell, you said at the beginning, you referred to something about the board's size and the census. What do you mean by that? Does the census dictate how many board members they get?
No, they have to wait for the census to determine just where they're gonna put the representatives.
So, I wouldn't minimize that fact if that's where you think your energy is. You get one shot every 10 years for a census. We only have 18 months till that next census is coming.
I know it. But how many years it's been since they had that referendum?
Well, I invite you to join us as we partner to try to get a fair and accurate count in 2020. We need everyone on deck to make sure we count everyone.
Randy, I asked, I don't know, a month ago, a number of weeks ago, about the city issuing a permit for the demolition of that building. Has the city yet issued said permit?
No, on the advice of the city attorney, the city's not gonna issue a demo permit until we get information from the state that says it's approved. And if we get, once we get that, the city attorney will review it.
Will that come before council?
Yeah, is there any way that we can be informed as to every step of that process?
Well, we'll let you know, it isn't something that typically requires council approval, it's just someone applying for a permit.
I think...
Certainly, I'll let you know when it comes in, but...
This is a very unusual case.
Very much so.
I'm just gonna mention, Lowell, that, because I don't think you said this at the beginning, you're talking about the Rock Island County Courthouse and the Rock Island County Board, which is separate from the city of Rock Island, city council, and our government. But I feel like we do have a stake in whether or not the courthouse is demolished. I'm not gonna get into all of the factors involved in that. So, I'm in agreement with Alderman Parker that this is an unusual circumstance. It is going to affect, in some ways, downtown Rock Island and the future, our future. So, I'd like to be, I have our council as informed and involved as they would like to be.
And I guess I should be on record, due to the nature of the appearance of a possible conflict of interest, I'll be removing myself from any discussion in the courthouse.
Well, yeah, definitely, I want to know where we're at. I never got a response to that email. But there are a lot of my constituents that have very vocalized their opinion on this matter. And Lowell, you are a great resident of our city, and you make a valid point, in my opinion, that it's not a matter of whether you care if the building is coming down or not, it is a matter of it needs to follow the law.
Correct.
So, I would like to make sure that that is the case. So, please keep us posted. And thank you very much for your, in my opinion, wise advice to the city and the city listening to it.
Thank you.
We plan on following the law. We're gonna make sure that everything's done before we issue a permit.
That's all.
Yeah. At least to the best of our ability. Okay? Thank you, Lowell.
Thank you.
Appreciate you standing up. All right, that's the end of the list. We have item number 23.
Executive Session 5 ILCS 120, Section 2, C2. Collective Negotiating Matters Between the Public Body and Its Employees or Their Representatives.
Moved to go into executive session for the exception cited.
Second. Second. Any discussion on that? Rule call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Edis.
Yes.
Collinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ice, snow days.
It's a nice touch, Tim.
Motion carried.
It's a nice touch. Man, we're getting fancy around here.